Okay.
Being recorded.
Okay.
To let your audience know that.
Oh, okay.
So those in attendance, the meeting is being recorded.
Okay, members of the committee, public that are here, this is our draft request for proposals for the reuse of the Baldenville Elementary School. And as you can see here, this is the building, the front view of it. It was approved and adopted by this, the Baldenville Elementary School Disposition Advisory Committee, the tenth day of January two thousand nineteen by a vote of four in favor, zero opposed and zero abstained. Now, as you can see, this is the table of contents for the draft. RFP. As you can see, we're gonna go through the introduction, the sale of Baldenville Elementary School, the history, the demographics, property description, site characteristics, town assistance, zoning, building and site photos, submission requirements, mandatory terms, selection process and evaluation criteria, and the terms and conditions. Now, anybody could feel free to make any kind of suggestions, make, address any kind of concerns. The committee wants to get feedback, and this is our opportunity to do that. Okay. This is the introduction here, let me zoom in so you can see it. Now, the Board of Selectment Act on behalf of the Town of Templeton here in town, through the Baldenville Elementary School Disposition Advisory Committee, is seeking proposals from qualified development entities for sale and redevelopment of the Baldenville Elementary School Building at Sixteen School Street in Templeton, which consists of three subparcels of land of approximately point nine acres. This building is located at Sixteen School Street and has an area of approximately twenty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-seven square feet on three levels. The town intends to work closely with the chosen developer in an attempt to preserve the historic qualities of the building as well as satisfy the economic and social needs of Templeton's residents. Built in nineteen twenty-three, Baldenville Elementary School is constructed for the purpose of educating the inhabitants of Templeton. The building has been used exclusively as a school since that time. Goals and public purpose, the goal of the town in issuing this RFP is to determine the proposed use or redevelopment that will be in the best interest of the town. This will not necessarily be the proposal that includes the highest proposed purchase price. The town desires to see the property used in a way that meets the following goals. Economic climate, the redevelopment should enhance the overall economic climate in Templeton. Elimination of blight, redevelopment should replace the existing conditions with an attractive and fully tenanted building. Historic preservation, rehabilitation of the property should be done in a way that respects and enhances the historic character of the Baldenville Elementary School Building and surrounding area. So this is the process, this disposition of property is subject to the Uniform Protection Act, MGL Chapter thirty B. This request for proposal offers the sale of a parcel of land consisting of two, the subparcels of land as is. For the purpose outlining this RFP and desired by the buyer in conformance with all applicable zoning, use and development regulations. This RFP provides general information about the property, including history, zoning and utility information, as well as submission requirements to respond to this request for proposals. It is the respondent's responsibility to review and analyze fiscal conditions, required permits and approvals, legal considerations in any and all town bylaws and regulations that may impact the proposed project. Now, since this is a draft, we will be going through and reviewing anything, any kind of suggestions, any kind of corrections, because this, as, before we go out to the RFP process, we're trying to make sure that documents sound. It's what every, the community wants, it's what the, the, the reuse committee wants, and we're trying to come up with the, the best proposal we can put out there collaboratively. Okay. Now, I'm, I'm gonna go quickly through this, uh, 'cause everybody in attendance has a copy, correct? And everybody on the committee does as well. So the history, Baldenville Elementary School is commercial property owned and operated by the town. Uh, I think the history part's very short, I'll just go over that. The original building was destroyed in a fire December eighteenth nineteen twenty-one. The building that now stands was built in nineteen twenty-three, had a cost of ninety-seven thousand dollars and opened on November twenty-fourth nineteen twenty-three and has operated as a school ever since. As you can see, the, the demographics is in there. With an appendix A, it's the community comparisons adopted by the select board, as well as some population information, uh, moderate income community with median household income. And, uh, that's it pretty much for demographics. Now, under four, property description and site characteristics, this is the location and general site information. People know where it is, but this is more specific where the lot pointed to the parcels. So move to the next slide. Okay. Now, as you can see in these slides right up here, I'm gonna zoom in so everybody can see. This is actually the location, right here, of the Baldenville Elementary School, you can see it better. On this one, I wanted to have two in here so you could actually see the location and as well as the, uh, parcels on here. This is the related planning documents, so the town completed the community master plan in two thousand seventeen. Uh, and everybody's, could go, go to the site by going to the Planning Board's webpage at www dot templetonone dot org. And proposals should be consistent with these plans. And we, we covered the parking, the building information as we went over, uh, the twenty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-seven square feet, the exterior, the interior. Okay, now, town assistance, under this section, we cover, the town will provide reasonable assistance to developer to obtain essential information. Examples of, or loans, tax credits or grants, and aid to assemble the needed finances. In addition, the town has adopted the Community Preservation Act. It will entertain proposals which may require assistance for the development of affordable housing. Zoning. Yes?
Just have a question on town assistance, would the town be willing to donate the parcel, the building, if it were to be affordable housing?
To donate?
Donate, yeah.
To donate the building?
Yeah.
No, the town wants to sell the building. That is our goal.
I'm asking the question, if it were affordable housing, would add units to the Chapter forty B percent for the town, would they be willing to donate the land and the building?
They'll all be considered through the RFP?
Yeah, it has to go through a formal process and, oh, then to the select board, uh, so there's a process that has to be followed. I just didn't want to answer for the committee, uh, because the committee makes the recommend-
It goes through the RFP process and then it's, it's coming before the board.
Yeah, right, so i- if that, a proposal was asking for the donation of the, the building to do X, Y and Z, and the committee deemed it to be the best for the town, then, then, so.
That would be considered by this committee to the board. But this committee had a charge that was given to them before the board?
Yeah.
And that was to, um, sell the building?
Yeah.
As a board member, that's how I'm speaking, is through that, but I'm also on this committee.
We appreciate it.
I asked the question, so.
It's not that we wouldn't consider that, but it would have to be considered through all, all the proposals that are given through this committee. But thank you for the question.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Okay, allowable uses, the property is zoned as a village district, so any, anything that complies with the zoning in that area could be us, used.
If questions can go to Richard Hanks.
Yes, thank you. And any questions could go to Richard Hanks, his email's right here, r hanks at templetonma.gov, thank you Diane for pointing that out.
Yeah.
And, as we can see, uh, I'll just cover the special permits section. Special permits may be granted by the zoning board of appeals if they find that the proposed, uh, is in harmony with the intent of the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaws, will not create undue traffic congestion, and will not impair the integrity of the district or be detrimental to health, safety or welfare. The ZBA may impose conditions on approval. Okay, let's go to the next slide, or excuse me, next page. And I, I just wanna zoom in here, this is where the, uh, the village zoning district, these are the allowed uses, so. Anybody's concerned or has any questions on what can actually go into this building, these are the acceptable or allowed uses for that particular district.
An SP, a special permit? Okay, just making, just clarifying.
And as Diane just mentioned right here.
Okay, well, sometimes people don't read the very-
Yeah, absolutely, that was a good point you brought up.
Just wanted to clarify for the public.
Not everything requires, just where the SP is.
SP, yeah.
Yeah, so on the site here, as was mentioned by the committee, the Y would designate yes for residential, except for single family, mixed uses in a single building would qualify, home occupation minor, yes, home occupation major, and then that would be SP, and then it continues downward.
And if the public, um, her view, who are viewing, if they wanted to pick up a copy of this, where could they get one?
Right at the selectman's office.
Okay, thank you.
It's also online.
And it's also online.
They can also go online to the website and print one off?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
These are some building and site photos, I'll zoom in, oh, zoom in for the, uh, viewing audience. Here's some outside of the site pictures. Lori, if you wanted to jump in, 'cause you took these pictures, you did a great job.
The pictures on the left are actually out back of the building.
Out back, yeah.
And on the right, it's just photos of the building itself.
Is that the front of the building?
That's the front of the building.
That's the front of the building, okay.
Right up here. And then right here, and this is the side of the building.
Right side or left side?
If you're facing it, it'd be the right-
Well, I'm asking for the public, thank you.
It's on the right. You're welcome, but you made me think.
Okay, and then this is the inside of the building.
And these photos are just of the various offices, open rooms, the stairways. Um, that's, the top left is the kitchen.
Kitchen right here.
That's currently there now.
And the stairways, as you mentioned, right here. And then there's another one right here. And this is like, you must see a lot of the classroom settings.
There are many classrooms.
Many classrooms, and they're like that. Just so the viewing audience and everybody can see, that's what the building looks like. Yes?
Were there, were there, will there be access to the building between now and the submission date?
Yes, that's a very good question, we, because we don't have the floor plans, if you will, we're gonna be scheduling a walkthrough.
Okay.
And, uh, when we go out with the formal RFP, well, the committee would have to approve, then it would go out to the formal RFP, and there will be a date scheduled for a walkthrough, uh, and it will be in the RFP. Thank you.
It, it is in there, it's, uh, section four, the very bottom line on page four. It, it doesn't have a date yet, obviously, but, uh.
No.
Thank you, Tony. Yeah, we did cover that, uh, we've mentioned that, what, the last, we adopted the draft RFP. And paperwork in the back, not the back, I should say, in section eight, will have all the submission requirements right here. So I, I will highlight, uh, respondent shall submit one original and seven copies of the proposal by two P M., and we're shooting for a date, 'cause it's not in here yet, when it was, the draft RFP was approved, but we will, when we finalize, put March eleventh at two P M. So proposal by two P M. on March eleventh.
That's the date we're shooting for.
That's the date, yeah, as Diane mentioned.
That's not set in stone. Correct, I just wanna be clear that that date is subject to change.
Right now, uh, yeah, the committee will have to vote on that.
Right.
But when we get back to our committee meeting, correct, I just didn't wanna answer the question and not-
I understand that, but I don't, I don't want the public to have that date in their head and then it change and-
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. But tentatively, it is March eleventh at two P M., tentatively.
Thank you.
And this, the address Baldenville Elementary School Disposition Advisory Committee, through the selectman office, one sixty Patriots Road, room six, East Templeton, MA, oh one four three eight. And it's important to note, the proposals must be submitted in a sealed package or envelope labeled B E S proposal. Okay, and then anybody else, there's, and then all the rest is, uh, proposal submission requirements, uh, way to raise the contact.
You'll notice that Adam Lamontaine's email address is on there for any questions you might have.
Yes, if, and I will, right, zoom in, so anybody's, everybody sees that, A Lamontaine at templetonma.gov. Any questions or concerns, send them off my way.
Home calls will not be accepted?
Yes, home calls will not be accepted.
No person visits.
I think it's important to cover number ten.
Number ten, okay. Then this is our mandatory terms.
No, no, I mean number ten of section eight, I'm sorry.
Number ten of section eight, okay. Thank you, Tony, yes, good point. Number ten of section eight, as Tony mentioned, it's, that's important to cover. A certified check or a bank cashier's check for five thousand dollars payable to the Town of Templeton. The town will deposit the checks in a non-interest bearing account. That's important, that's one of the, uh, of the section eight that needs to get done, as well as the following attachments must be included with the proposal, proposal response form, certificate of non collusion, certificate of tax compliance and disclosure of beneficial interest. Okay, and moving on to ten, the selection process and evaluation criteria. Now, the committee spent a lot of time on this, the proposal selection. Uh, proposal will be reviewed by the Baldenville Elementary School Disposition Advisory Committee, as you see, these are the members of the committee sitting here tonight. Maybe introduce each other, you want, for the viewing audience?
Sure, Tony DeJoy.
Chris Langen.
Diane Haley-Brooks.
Dennis Rich.
Stephen Olson.
And Glenn Eaton is also part of the board or the committee.
He's just not here.
Ann Rich Curtis.
Ann Rich Curtis.
Ann Rich Curtis.
So, and, and here, as you can see, the rule for award, we're gonna go down here. Unless, members want to highlight something else that, before I continue on?
Um, that, um, the town may request supplementary information.
Yes.
The town reserves the right to reject.
Yeah.
I mean, it's all in there.
It's, yeah, it's, and it's all available online, it's just-
Right.
A lot of language that-
I think we should go over the rules for the award in, in detail.
Yes.
I would like to do that.
Okay.
If that's all right with you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, rule for award, the most advantageous proposal from a responsive and responsible respondent, taking into consideration price and all other evaluation criteria set forth in this solicitation. Minimum selection criteria, number one, the proposal must contain all required information, forms, certifications and deposit. Number two, the respondent must submit satisfactory evidence that they have the ability to obtain sufficient financing to complete the project that's proposed. This may include a preapproval letter or similar commitment from a financing source indicating sufficient funding to complete the proposed project. Okay, moving on to the next page. The comparative evaluation criteria, as Diane mentioned, this is very important to go over. All proposals meeting the minimum evaluation criteria will be further reviewed in accordance with the following comparative evaluation criteria. Proposals will be evaluated on how they address the goals and public purposes outlined above using the technical criteria specified below. The town may consider price in its evaluation of proposals, but the board reserves the right to select a proposal that does not propose the highest sales price. Each duly submitted proposal will be reviewed by the Baldenville Elementary School Disposition Advisory Committing, Committee according to the following technical criteria and scored according to the following characteristics. It's important to note, the scoring is in no particular order. Okay, and as you can see, each one, overall responsiveness to the submission requirements, impact on economic conditions in Templeton, I'm, I'm just gonna note, one is not responsive all the way to five highly responsive for the people in the room and the viewing audience to know. Uh, so it goes from one to five. Impact on economic conditions in Templeton, as mentioned, project feasibility and financial strength of the developer, developer's project plan and schedule, compatibil, compatibility, excuse me, with the needs and characteristics of the neighborhood. Moving on to the next page. Plans to address the parking needs of the property, dedication to the preservation and maintenance of the historical aspects of the building, consistency with the town's two thousand seventeen community master plan, documented skill and experience in adaptive reuse of buildings. And the, uh, question, last question, accommodating affordable housing, that's either you, yes or a no, and it's, that's on a zero to two point scale. And the highest score available is forty-seven, and the lowest score possible is a nine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, then it gets into the term of conditions, this is a standard process that's followed on the RFP process. And anything in particular on the, on that section that we wanted to cover?
I don't know, does anyone else? And then these are all the exhibits.
And then the exhibits are attached, the deed information and the comparison communities and the proposal forms. So that is it. Mister Chairman?
So do we accept this then, maybe we-
Well, I, I think it's, we still have a public question, any kind of, any kind of questions or any kind of-
No, it's-
No, it's- Open it.
Okay, so we'll open it to public questions, thoughts?
Well, that was easy.
Yes.
No, no questions.
Do you have any commentary at all, or any thoughts?
My thought is that the, the draft looks quite well.
Thank you.
It's like a lot of effort, a lot of things to consider in the press.
Okay, any thoughts?
This committee worked extremely hard, I wanted to say, on this and did a lot of work, they thoroughly went through this and they spent countless hours, uh, so we, I, I don't wanna speak for the committee, but I, I appreciate the kind words, and I'm sure they do as well.
No, they all did, I just recently joined the committee due to a resignation, so they worked very hard.
I, I could probably sit here and ask questions all for another two hours, but I, the, the submission date for Mar, of March eleventh is very aggressive if someone is thinking about doing a proposal for affordable housing.
Okay.
Well, I just wanna, you're right-
I know that's not set in stone, it's just-
Yeah, and, and the thing is with, with the RFP process, it has to be out there for thirty days, uh, so what the committee is, it's on a very strict timetable, s- so, uh, 'cause as everybody knows, the new school's being built.
Yeah.
The school's now, you know, gonna be sitting there, so it is very aggressive.
Could you, could you maybe explain a little bit more why thirty days is aggressive for, for affordable housing?
No, I understand. Um, well, I think as a housing project, it would be pretty challenging. I've been in the school, my grandson went there, so I'm somewhat familiar with the school, so, um, there could be safety and health issues, because the building is so old, there may be accessibility challenges. If it, just for instance, if we're, if there was a thought about senior housing, you have to look at the building for now, the accessibility, or how do folks get up to second floor and, and things like that. So it really takes a real in-depth look at the physical property to come up with solutions if a proposal was gonna go ahead to, to afford some type of housing.
What would that timeframe be, like what would you, what's your, if it's not thirty, what do you think that would be?
Probably more sixty. And, and I'm not, it's been my experience, that's kind of the timeframes I've dealt with in the past. And, um, but I will say, it's never enough time, whether it's thirty, sixty, I mean, there's always a crunch that is felt getting people to the site, having to go through the building, um, talking with the state about what are the resources available for family housing, senior housing, maybe, you know, accessible housing. Um, so there's a thousand roadblocks that you have to overcome for any housing project in the Commonwealth, and they all funnel through essentially a single person. And, um, just, it's very challenging these days because of lack of resources to do affordable housing, if you don't have private money.
Thank you.
That's some great input.
Hmm.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Uh, we did get an email, it needs to be in the record as well, um,
Email from?
Robert May.
Oh.
Let me wish that was.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have an email that was received from Robert May on Thursday the thirty-first. Uh, question number one, they're just questions, can you tell the taxpayers why the B E S didn't put out an RFI to private entities? Number two, how did this committee determine the best use for the B E S without creating one RFI and only interviewing a town employee, V S O? Number three, how does this plan move the cost for the building off the Templeton taxpayer? Doesn't it just switch the public expense from local to state or federal? Number four, why should the taxpayers spend money for RFPs to veteran agencies based on these committee's statement regarding skipping RFI's, quote, "to get back on track with the charge for the B O S," end quote? Comment, this committee, however, well intended, skipped the process and made a decision based on expediency, not completeness. Not a method for success, Robert May.
Do we have to answer them?
It's to the committee where they want, whatever action they want to take with it. I just felt it's important to read everything into the public record. So if you want, you could explain why, not, don't, don't even want to, or somebody wants to.
I mean, I can, I can take a crack at them, and if anyone wants to add.
Well, I hate, I hate to, um, if we don't really know all the right answers to put out, well, we have to answer them, it's a public hearing, so. Sure, um, Tony, please. So if you tell which question you're answering.
So question one, why we didn't, uh, put out RFI's to private entities. Uh, going through the process, which most of us were new at, we, we felt that by putting a solid RFP out, the need for RFI's is just an extra step, and it really, it gets you some ideas of interest, but it doesn't, it doesn't really help you. Yeah, that, you might, you, it, in my opinion, it, it's just, it's, it's useful, but not necessary.
Could you tell the public what an RFI is?
An RFI is a request for information that you would send out, we're thinking of doing this with this building, and what, um, kinda get ideas back from different type of developers or, or whomever uh, as to potential uses for the building. We expect to get that back with the proposals, so felt like it was an extra step. How, why we didn't determine the best use, well, we haven't determined what the best use is. Uh, this is question number two, we, we have yet to, that's what the proposals are for. Um, an RFI is not necessarily gonna get you the ideas of the best use. We did ask the V S O- We did ask the VSO, the Veteran Service Officer, uh, to come in as an idea, we did also, uh, talk within, um, external, um, real estate agent, broker, and, uh, just to get some information, and it was a committee's decision to, there's nothing saying we have to do an RFI, so we felt it was in the best interest of the town to get this process moving along, to not do the R, uh, to do an RFI. Um, as far as how does this plan to move the cost, this is question number three, this building off the Te- Templeton taxpayers, does it just swi- switch a public expense from local to state or federal? We don't know the answer to that until we get the proposals. So we, we can't answer that. The, our charge is to do what is best for the town, if there is a way to put it on the tax rolls somehow for the town, great, but until we get the proposals back, we, we can't answer that question. And then, um, the fourth question is, why should taxpayers spend money for RFPs to veterans' agencies based on the committee's statement regarding skipping the RFI to get back on track, charged with a BOs? Um, I don't recall that statement being made, I don't know if that was in the minutes, it may have been, um-
I don't recall.
We, we, we do have a timeline that we're trying to work to, to get this in front of the annual town meeting, so, I believe that, that is the case. And the veteran agent was just here, we, we looked at some ideas, and then, again, like I said, we, we talked to a, a, a real estate broker, um, so, we just felt that the best course was to go, um, and, and do the RFP. So it's not, we're not specifically targeting veterans agents, we're not specifically targeting, um, affordable housing, um, you see, you see the criteria that's in there, you know, whatever is the best use for the Town of Templeton and the best proposal, so, so it's really is gonna come down to the best proposal that, that meets the criteria is the way we'll go.
I agree with all those answers to you.
I do as well.
And I would also like to state that every one of our meetings that we've had since, uh, this past fall have been open to the public, so if anyone in the public wants, wants to come, they're, they're more than welcome to come to these meetings, as like they can with every town meeting, they're open, and we're, we welcome the public to come in. Dennis and Steve, you're good?
That's, that's good.
See you.
I have nothing.
Do you think those are all-
I agree with you.
Yeah. Thank you, Tony, for answering those. Thank you. Those will be reflected in the minutes. Thank you, Lori.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns?
Thank you for those, um, answers and your input, that was very valuable, very valuable. Thank you for coming.
Make a motion to close the open hearing.
So moved.
Second?
The public hearing.
The public hearing.
The public hearing, right.
So, all opposed, uh, all favor, I'm sorry, favor. Opposed, abstentions.
The parking is closed.